Okay, do a pledge of allegiance please. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, to get started with, Jason, I'm gonna let you come up with a name. Jason Moore was here from CWC to give you any, have any questions regarding the bridge. They're gonna build by craft, former craft, I should say. And we had two packets to look at. One from Delaware Engineering, one from S-N-L.
S-L.
S-L-N, I always do Saturday Night Live. So Jason, why?
Well, I said I don't see that. So yeah, like the mayor said, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Two bids did come in, the costs were quite a bit different. One bid came in at four hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars, and the second bid came in at one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. We've reviewed everything at CWC, myself, our court counsel, and our project manager for the flood hazard mitigation program, which oversees this specific project. We believe that the low bid is a responsible bid, it covers everything in the scope that we were looking for. I know we were looking at, with the mayor, some concerns of potential overages, and we wanted to make sure that the low bidder felt comfortable with their bid, they weren't gonna come in with a bunch of extra charges for extra meetings or extra pass. CWC feels confident that between being available for all meetings, onsite visits, and just being oversight on the project, we can keep those additional tasks at a minimum, including with DOT themselves, which may be the biggest variable in the entire project. It's really not that difficult for us to feel comfortable with the low bid. So if there's anything specific that I can answer for you, I'd be happy to do so.
What are the differences in what's included between a low bid and a high bid?
Most of the, I, from my understanding, it seems like one of the bids assumed very little interaction with DOT, and the other bid tried to encompass worst-case scenario and just put one charge in there and said, "We won't charge you above this, but here's worst-case scenario what we think it is."
Okay.
That's my interpretation. With the low bidder, again, I just don't see them doubling their their current bid to get up to the price of the second bid. Especially with us being there at those meetings. We're gonna try to keep the cost down as well, obviously. The more money we save on this project, the more money we have for additional projects down the road. The goal remains the same regardless of which bidder you choose, is that we want a shovel-ready project for if and when construction funds come along. So we'll make sure that whatever, whoever gets the bid is definitely doing what they're supposed to do and has us a shovel-ready project.
And if they should go over their proposed amount, what happens then?
That's something I think we would have to look at on a... They'd have to propose why they're going over, and it's something that you guys would have to approve each time it goes above, whether they tried to do one large increase or multiple increases. I'd probably defer to your attorney on how you'd like to handle that. But I believe, once you accept a bid for that price, that is the price, and then it's something you negotiate going forward for any additional costs.
Do they reserve the right to make those determinations on DOT line item?
There are, looking, I was just looking at it again before we said, there are five scheduled meetings with DOT. And again, CWC will make sure we have staff at each and every one of those meetings. We also, through our board, have connections with the state. We have a governor rep on our board. We feel that we can kind of coordinate with DOT and keep their comments and review to a minimum. We'll obviously make sure that they get their review time, but we're not going to have them come back and hassle the village or the engineers with ten million questions to try to increase the cost down the road. We'll try to make that very clear at the very first initial sit-down, that they'll get their time to review and comment, but they have to sit and wait for those times.
I've had many conversations. I've gone to Graydon Dutcher, he's taken a look at it for the flood commission. CWC's looked at it a couple of times, John has looked at it.
Yep.
And then you guys came back again and you looked at it. We've had three or four conference calls regarding it with all the kinds of questions that come up with it. And my concern was like what yours are. I just didn't, I was very skeptical of the difference in the price. And I didn't want to take the low bid and then have to come up with all these extra add-ons and it be over the original bid like we had from Delaware Engineering.
Right.
And then it wouldn't be fair to them.
Right.
So long as we made an understanding with them, that they understand, there will be some differences, but it'll be nothing compared to what the total of the bid was. That's how I got it.
But CWC, we can put in for more money, Ken?
You've been approved well beyond the low bid amount right now. I can't remember if we've already executed the contract with the village for your approved amount for the design. I believe that amount is already over four hundred thousand dollars that was approved for us. So we have that, I don't wanna say to play with, but you've been approved up to that amount. So hopefully we stay at the one eighty-nine. But if it does go above that, you've already been approved for additional funds above one eighty-nine. We wanna keep that to a minimum though, obviously.
Is there a ceiling on the approved funds?
The approved funds, I just don't remember the number offhand. I believe it was four hundred and twenty thousand maybe, give or take.
Which is around the high bid.
Right.
You know, we were here when I say the project. Both bids are, they both fulfill the requirements that we asked for. So the difference basically is just cost. We can't find any discrepancy between, but one says you're gonna do one, the other, it's just how much it's gonna cost to get it done.
They both fulfill the requirements that were discussed, that were ruled out.
And both companies have worked for us before successfully.
Yeah, SLN used to be Malone and Malone, I think we had one before, because they done work in the village before.
Are you familiar with any of the survey aspects of this?
I know the survey costs are roughly the same. That's one of the areas that was roughly the similar cost between the two bids. They were only off by about three hundred dollars apiece for the two bids.
And those wages are prevailing?
I'd assume these are prevailing, we just, yeah.
Because it has to be.
Yeah, through the village, yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve the SLNs contract with this project.
Or a recommendation or a motion?
I can make a motion, I'll make the motion. On second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
At any time if anybody has any questions or anything, don't hesitate to reach out to us. We're pretty open.
Yeah.
And we'll try to make time for you guys whenever you need with any questions.
Yeah, I'll call you.
Okay.
The one thing I wanted to make clear with S-LN, I always, I'm sorry about that, I'm sorry about that. They had mentioned in the thing about us doing flagging sometimes.
Yes, possibly, yeah.
And I said on them, we have a crew that's busy all the time, so we really don't have days to finish flagging. So you gotta put that in Europe, so that's a little bit, so.
That was in their bid. I know when we talked to them and asked them if that was something that, you know, if they were comfortable with their bid, flagging did come up as something they thought maybe they could reduce the cost on. But it was included in the number, so.
Yeah, because we, yeah, because we, our guys are busy all the time. Much as Butch likes to go out there, also DPW is, he loves to go out there mingling with the crowd. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Using outside of public input, I just have one person in the corner. Anybody with public input, want a question? Not right now, right? Abstracts, everybody's had a chance to take a look at them, any motion for that?
I move to we pay the abstracts.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Up my heads, Delaware Engineering, Billy, you're first.
Hello. Couple things that touch base on, we have a variety of projects in, at various stages at the wastewater plant. Number of funding applications went in over the summer. We hope they have determinations here in the next week or two from the state on those, which we're hoping there. Also in discussions of potentially applying for funding through a different program through the state in March, which would require an assessment of the wastewater plant, and what's the twenty, thirty-year plan for the wastewater plant, realizing that a lot of the parts and pieces are forty and fifty years old. Kind of the outcome of the CFAs may give us some direction, what we might wanna do there. Switching to the, kind of the other end of the fight, on the water system. The village did close Friday with EFC on the financing for the water project. So the grant loan is available to the village now, as of Friday, to start development on that process. So we have been working on the design for the replacement pipelines and the water tanks. Now we have EFC approval, get the surveyors out, to go out and work with Butch and get utilities marked out and all that kind of make our maps and whatnot, so.
That's great.
That's proceeding.
While we're here, the wrong project, okay, keep going. There's so many of them, I give them.
Yeah, the next one I haven't seen. Also on the water, so we've talked over the last couple of months about the replacement of the Curry well, the existing one, kind of behind McDonald's, but behind CBS Marshall. So the village retained Sterling Environment, which is a hydrogeology firm out of the Alton area, to help coordinate that project. Sterling prepared to scope a work to bring a well driller in to drill the test well to see, you know, if we could put another well in to replace the existing Curry well, whose production is growing up. So they solicited four quotes from four drillers. We got one back and three were too busy. We did, well, we did receive was from Wayne Christensen, who the village knows well, has done, I think, pretty much all the work on the the five existing wells for the last number of years. So they're familiar with the system and the village is familiar with them. They provided a quote to install the test well in the amount of thirty-four thousand five ninety-five. That is based on a variety of unit pricing. So, you know, the biggest one is how deep you have to go. So we asked, you know, Sterling estimated eighty feet. If we have to go shallower, it'd be at less cost. If has to go deeper, it's potentially more cost at the given unit price. Sterling and us and the village would be onsite when that's going on. You know, if we get into something where it's got to go deeper for whatever reason, you'd be talking to the village to recognize that. The existing well's only thirty feet deep, which doesn't, you know, current standards for how deep new wells have to be, so might not have to go eighty, but we'll probably, we will be deeper than thirty. With the existing one being at thirty, it gives you the idea that it's not gonna be a four-hundred-foot well like you might have on a Helltop or something like that. We don't expect. So kind of, the next step in replacement of the well is to drill this test well, to take water samples. They set a pump up in it and pump it overnight to see how much water it can produce. And if it can produce enough in the waters of the, it's clean enough and has the right characteristics, then the next step would be to put in a large diameter test well where you do more testing. And if that all checks out, then that would be your finished well. And you would put a pump in that and we would connect it to the existing water system and have power leads out there, and that would be in the well. Really, the reason we're looking in this location is because your existing treatment facilities are here. If we were looking in other areas of the village, you'd also have to put in a new treatment facility, which would be very expensive, so. We've utilized the existing treatment system, which was put in not long years ago now. That should be, give us the best thing for it, so. That is, that is our request for this evening, is relative to getting Wayne Christensen on board with replacement of Curry well, to put the test well in to start.
So we did motion there.
I did a motion.
Second?
Well, is that, and just to clarify, this is using stimulus funding?
Yeah, the ARPA funding comes, I don't know, I can't remember the acronym, it's on up here.
Yeah.
The federal, which the village has received the first half, the first half of the installment.
Yeah.
And the next July, August, the second half, so.
Anything going with the well is all gonna be from there.
Yep, good use of that.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
So with that, I need to open a checking account so that
We can have.
So I can pay these people. So I need authorization from the board for open a checking account.
I need to open a checking account.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Carry. I think that's all I had to add for, two other updates to CWC bridge you talked about. So really, the next step is there, you have a proposal, which you approved from SLR, is to enter into a contract with them based on the terms and conditions that are in that proposal, and then for them to start the design on it. Jason also mentioned the agreement with CWC, which you do. You apply for funding for the project to cover all the costs, so it's not coming out of the village, village coffers or village budget. CWC's providing funding for the design. And you have a contract from them, once you execute that, that starts the clock on completing that project.
We have a copy, right?
You got it, okay, okay.
We, we held off on signing until you had an engineer on board, because once you sign it, it starts the clock for completion of it, which I believe is eighteen months, so. Those couple ongoing projects, Saltwater Conservation District, some work was done this past summer, and more work to be done. And then the other big target is the highway garage, so we'll give it push some more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Butch? Thanks, Ron. Good evening.
I mean, butch. Can I just throw the one down?
Everybody on the board?
Yes.
Concerns?
Any questions or concerns?
I forget, what is, what are the traps, what is Dean traps? Maybe I read it wrong. I'll have to get back to it.
This one, this is the trap there.
Yeah. Safes, excuse me, traps.
Oh, the big safes?
Yeah.
So when anybody, any contractor, any homeowner, anybody that's new on the road, they gotta pay a bill.
Oh, okay.
We get contacted from Big Safe New York, so we have O K L or your tools.
Gotcha, okay. I just, I saw that and I was, what the heck is that?
We do a lot of them, a lot of them.
When they dig, we know that I can hit a wire.
Right, wire, pipe sewer, sewer. Storm sewer.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So we do do a lot of those. Everything's been pretty much, probably for a hundred times really, anything drafted up.
I think Wednesday maybe, I guess I'm still like that.
They called that off now, so.
Did they?
Yeah, so.
They called off Wednesday?
No, the last snow, the snow, we probably get snow on Wednesday.
We did salt the streets twice last weekend, but other than that, so far, been pretty good.
Good.
Did the town help out with the removal of that tree from last night?
That, this particular one, no.
No, did you?
Yeah, we didn't need those, it was a smaller tree, so we just cut down and chopped it, broke it, chopped it, burned it.
I got a request from a citizen to ask you about the caution lights on North Street in the school zone. How many hours to fix?
Uh, it's been.
I know what Tom told me.
Yeah.
I know that. I didn't know what to say.
Right. Last year they were working, I believe they are ours, but nobody really knows for sure. Probably not working.
Well, that was the complaint, that they weren't working, and of course, they go out and have to bang it and do. Stand on their head.
Yeah, last, last time, there was a blown fuse or breaker or something.
Just, just take a look at it, please.
They're all tomorrow, that's in the store waiting.
The state with me in store?
That was, that was where I was told.
Yeah, they sent me.
That's where I was told, we, that's still happening, yes.
And Joda told us in advance that whatever the state gave us for that crosswalk was gonna sit in the store shed.
The only thing I have, we have a homeowner requesting to do the sidewalk repair, who wants to participate in fifty-fifty program.
Christmas.
Yeah, eighty Liberty Street, and the cost of the concrete for this project, we're looking at way around six hundred dollars. And we have the money there for that.
Can you do that for us, Tony?
You can do this time of year, I wouldn't advise him, this time of year, make him do it, just bring what, bring the soup bombs before the next budget.
Yeah.
I just, I informed him. And of course, the other thing is, I'm not sure if concrete prices are gonna change now then. New way the market's, that's where you know.
Cost of everything?
Yeah.
So. I would motion that we authorize this gentleman to participate in the fifty-fifty program. Second?
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry. Thank you, sir. Josh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I don't really have anything. Got the report for the couple weeks that I was here. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with anything?
No, I'm impressed with what you've done. You catch enough of these people. I think they're starting to pay attention.
Trying. I get pulled back on the fire and safety inspections because of COVID. Some of them, I'm still doing, because the tenants are not home. Place of business, when I schedule it, could be empty. So I'm still proceeding with that to stay busy, so.
No, everything good, everybody, everybody seems to know that you're around, and the ones who complain, that means you're doing your job, so.
Great. Well, thank you. So.
Appreciate it.
Nothing else, that's it, thank you. Jason?
Any questions on my report? Plans are running good. During the last month, Craft did shut down and made their transfer over to Lake Dallas, so that's complete, they're at Lake Dallas now, they're no longer Craft Foods. I do have a couple requests tonight. The first is requesting repair of a pump for our return activated sled. That's sixty-eight hundred and seventeen dollars, seventy-two cents from Blobber Equipment. It's an eighty percent village, twenty percent city cost. And we do have someone left over in the budget from a previous budgeted line item that we could use for that. Much to approve that purchase.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
The second one, which I sent later on, I got it later today after the report, is a service plan for our compressors in the C-Bud building. It's an annual price of five thousand twenty-four dollars. And this will send us out to... The offer expires on one twenty, twenty-two, I believe it's a five-year, yeah, it's a five-year agreement. And we did budget for, we budgeted five thousand, so we're twenty-four dollars and sixty cents shy, but we do have money over there for that. What's it called again? It's a service agreement on the compressors in the C-Bud building. Oh. That's a hundred percent city cost.
Motionly approved? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
That's all I had.
Thank you, sir, you guys stand up for a few minutes, right?
City costs, whatever it costs.
Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Everybody doing something?
Good. You ever heard of these one-man police departments? We got them.
So I, I, just so you guys, I have a couple things, real quick, I promise, for executive.
Yeah, we gotta go executive press.
Um, a couple things, we had some burglaries, I'm sure everybody's aware of, hurting the communities. They've been going on for the past couple weeks. Actually, was on the phone with a reporter on this past Monday, to put a little blurb out for like a community awareness type thing, to secure their residents and their businesses and stuff. And when I was on the phone, I got a call from one of the guys at the base station, had some more evidence. Based off the evidence, we were able to go in, I went right in, called a couple people in, were able to get a search warrant for residents, and we were able to make an arrest off, based off of that search warrant. Actually, we made two other arrests in connection with possession of stolen property also. So it was pretty good. Yeah, it was really good.
Good job.
Work on those guys, Sergeant Dumby and Officer Finch did an excellent job handling that. The rent rest was the last one that really put us over the top. We had a pretty good idea who was involved in the burglaries, but we weren't a hundred percent sure and didn't have enough evidence at that time to develop anything to get a search warrant. So we were able to do that. I think we recovered probably what's gonna be pretty close to ten thousand dollars for merchandise from those three different businesses that were, that are known that have been hit by this individual. So that was this past Monday. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving, our guys got involved in a traffic stop on Delaware Street. I think a lot of people heard about this one too. They made a traffic stop while questioning the driver. The passenger decided he was gonna flee the vehicle. One of our officers pursued him out behind CBS, down through the field. He threw an unknown object into the field, and then the officer lost him momentarily. He was later found in the river. And actually, Officer Wood actually had to jump in and probably saved him, because he actually was showing signs of hypothermia, so. I got to the shore, took him to medical, got him retrieved, and they're right now currently arrested and Delaware County Jail, waiting for their actions, so. It's a good, good job, they had a busy ten days, we had a busy ten days. And the community was great with their, you know, help with, you know, providing video footage and surveillances and stuff like that. So we were able to develop pretty quickly and add down some things really quick to get this sort of... We probably lost a lot of merchandise was on its way out of the village at the time when we ended up making a traffic stop out on Prospect Avenue. And detained two other people for that, and that's why we ended up arresting people, so they did a really good job. And then, and that's, what's that?
Fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, I think we saved a lot of money. We're working right now with the district attorney, we're hoping that, you know, up in here, I'd like to see these guys get their merchandise back, especially before Christmas, because it's, you know. But I don't, I don't know what the DA's office is gonna do with that yet, so. They did a good job though. And that's really all I have for right now, as far as like open forum.
Be sure to tell them thank you from us, it was a great job.
Yes, yeah, I will.
I appreciate it.
Definitely will.
It's a tough job out there.
Yeah, yeah, no, the guys I called, they came right then, they knew it was an important case, and we had a, like, actionable intel that we were, we packed on really quickly, we were gonna possibly use some of our choice, which obviously turned out to be a case, so. We wanted to get right on it. I stayed, I think Sergeant Dumby came in at seven, I think he stayed with me till four o'clock in the morning, and then came back in eleven o'clock the next day, and yeah, Officers Wood and Finch stayed on and transported him up to Deli, and they, they came in on their, well, Officer Finch stayed probably six or seven hours past his shift, and Logan Wood came in on his day off to help so we could have more hands for the search warrant. It was a really good job by all those guys.
It was fast too, within days.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was considerably quick, I thought.
It's great work.
Yeah, thanks.
Fantastic. Can't stop saying fantastic.
Yeah, no, they did a very heavy job.
You wanna come back in executive session?
If I could, sure.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Anything else? We'll go to you later on. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Trustee reports, I'll side with you, Nate. Nate, anything you want to say?
Park's quiet this, this kind of time of year, thinking about what we might like to do for the springtime. The theater just wrapped up the Christmas show. Thanks to everyone who came out and supported it. The next thing that's going on in the theater, at the theater, is on December 16th, Thursday, there's going to be a classic flicks, White Christmas. But before then, there will be a dedication of the newly finished renovated theater balcony, and it's beautiful up there. It's going to be dedicated to Margaret Van Bremen, who, who left the theater a lot of funds to help, help create this project. And there will also be a dedication of the Andrea Paternoster Room, which is the upstairs room behind the balcony. Andrea did lots of work for many years with the theater, and she's being honored with a dedicated flag. And the dedication will be at 5:30 PM on December 16th, Thursday, before the movie. And then people are, you know, more than asked to stay and enjoy, enjoy the classic flick. And I guess that's what I've got for today.
I'm sorry, what, what was the classic flick?
Uh, White Christmas.
Oh, okay.
You want to, you want to mention the 11th too? With Delaware, you've got Delaware?
Oh, yeah, thank you. We, we have Cherish the Ladies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cherish the Ladies is coming Saturday night, December 11th, and that's a fantastic show. They've been here before and they are amazing, which is why we were thrilled to have them back. And it's, it's a crazy good show. There's Irish dancing, there's fantastic folk music, and it's really not to be missed. It's very good. Saturday night at the theater, Cherish the Ladies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything?
Uh, tonight, I do not have anything.
What's it doing?
I have nothing to add. I don't really have to report.
Nothing to report, okay. Moving right along. Major report. I just have a couple things. Well, regarding what Eric, Nate was just talking about, music on the Delaware Saturday. Dave Reiser came up to me and asked if they could use this room on that night for the ladies, they're going to change here and have something to eat. And he said he would clean it all up, make sure it was good, and I just need more approval for that.
I move that we make the board move available to that performance.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. And do, give it a whole day?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that.
Okay, good. The other thing is, we got, about five years ago, four, five years ago, we did a, a contract with DOT, with shared services. And, you know, if we need help from them to help us, then we'll help them if any way we can. And the contract is up, so I just got another contract from them. It's not going to cost us anything, but it's another four-year contract. And I think it's a good idea. I just need an approval for that.
I motion that be approved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Carry. The only thing else I want to say real quick is to everybody from all of us on the board, because we won't see again until next year, is to wish everybody out there a Merry Christmas, and a Happy Holiday, and Happy New Year, from myself and the board.
What did you talk about, Chris?
Which one's that?
Court order?
Yeah, well, he and the guy.
Oh, the court order, it's on here, isn't it?
Yeah.
We have, we can do that number eight.
I thought you were going to talk about this resolution for the...
The resolution.
The land, the land acquisition.
Of SAP.
Oh, yeah. You want to... Did everybody see this, the...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's basically...
They're basically saying...
Supporting the resolution.
Support the resolution, which means that they don't want to let the city come in and buy the property.
Yeah.
Purchase property and intrude the village. They had talked about doing this years ago. They started by saying they were going to do it by the stream. We, we were on the flood prepared. We're going to take some of the property by the streams, and we'll go back 100, 100 feet. We won't own it, but we'll, you know, we'll have it for X amount of years, but you can't build on it. And then they got into a whole big thing with the county, with other people in the county, whether or not they want to allow the city to come in and purchase land, and we're saying no. And that's basically what the resolution is saying.
Yeah, look at, I mean, printed the map out.
Yeah.
See all the New York City-owned land already, and all the proposed sites.
We, we don't have enough land that it is now.
Who made the resolution?
Enough is enough.
Delaware County, County Board. So I need a motion to support the resolution.
I move to support their resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Do you want a letter from us? Or us?
No, we just go to, go to sign it, that's all. That's enough, that's...
Can I just ask to make sure I understand what you're saying? Delaware County made a resolution...
Not allowed to see, command and purchase the land by the streams and things like that. And they're looking for all the villages and towns to support the resolution.
So this is, you're just approving, sending a...
We're supporting what they're doing.
And their resolution is to have a moratorium on the proposed program, so I understand.
All right, you did a new checking, what? Number eight, the court order. Dick Doye and I did the court order, went upstairs with Chris, and we went over all the orders. We did our thing, and everything came out okay. We have it here, and just need a motion to approve it.
Motion that we approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Carry. Thank you. Which one is this? For the...
The court records?
No, we just...
No, no, this is for the village.
Oh, that, we just did, uh...
Yeah, we have to approve the draft, so they have finished.
Ah, okay.
Correct, Jerry?
Yes.
Yeah, so we need to approve that.
Yeah.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
That's our 2020, 2021...
2021 audit.
Audit.
Yeah.
Audit of their expenses or audit of their...
Our audit, our audit.
Court of those village finances. It's done every year.
We do it every year.
And this is a draft copy. They will send us the final copy after we approve this draft.
Make sure we're dotting the i's across the t's.
And...
And it was favorable?
Yes. Number 10, we have the budget amendments.
Yeah, I've ordered that. I just need approval.
Everybody got a chance to look at it? Need a motion to approve that, if you could.
I move that we approve the budget.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Okay, that'll be it for us. We're going to go into executive session. We've got two issues to bring up, Bone Alley and the Lichee contract from the county. So we have to discuss what we're going to do, so. Other than that, anyone else? Thank you for coming. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.